whose resources you took away. When we said we were going to combine the school systems, what happened? They pulled out. But our county still has to fund every other city schools. So the money that should be following our students who are in Memphis Shelby County schools gets decreased because that money also has to be shared with Millington, who says they don't want us, Bartlett, who says they don't want us, Germantown, who says they don't want us, Arlington, who says they don't want us. And don't get me started on the feeder city of DeSoto, Mississippi. Stay over there and enjoy your entertainment over there. Don't come to our Christmas games. Don't come eat at our food, eat our food. Don't come to Bass Pro. Ain't no Bass Pro in DeSoto. You want to call us all criminals? Less than 3% of the population of the city of Memphis commits crime. But 100% of us will be occupied if we bow down today to Donald Trump. So 97% of us haven't done a thing except survive and thrive and grip and grind. But you want to send the National Guard to keep us in our houses and to keep us away from the polls. This is a direct connection to the 2026 midterms and the 2028 election. So we say no to Donald Trump. We say no to the National Guard. We say no to Bill Lee. And we're voting in 2026. Voting in 2028. And we're not going. We are not going to allow the National Guard to come and have peace in a city where they are here to terrorize us. And we are not going to negotiate with a terrorist named Donald Trump.
We say no.
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 We believe that our city deserves investment. We deserve billions of dollars of investment from the state government, billions of dollars in financial investment from the federal government that we have been deprived for decades. We can wake up with this problem. It has been systematically created by Governor Bill Lee. The city council, when we tried to stand up against gun violence, I got expelled along with Representative Jones. Every year I put billions of dollars of investment into the governor's budget. And has a single dollar come back to deal with poverty in Memphis and Shelby County? Because they are not interested in dealing with the root causes of the problem. They want there to be a problem. And they want there to not be solutions that they can offer for political gain. Because we got to be honest about what is happening. This is a wannabe dictator pushing us toward an authoritarian regime to destroy our democracy, to destroy our voice, and to stop us from fighting back. And here's what happened, Memphis. We got some folks in positions of power who were bending the knee. Bowing down, kissing the rake. Saying we just got to do what they say. We can't speak up against it. We can't have any lawsuits against it. We just got to accept oppression. But we from Memphis. And the story of this place is people who stand up against oppression. The story of this place from Ida B. Wells and Robert our church and those 1,300 sanitation workers. It is a story of resistance against a status quo that is more interested in seeing us die and seeing us lose and seeing us suffer than providing us the resources that we need to educate every child, to feed every person in our city, to house every person, to pave every road. How can you deprive us of resources? And then tell us the only solution is military occupation? We need poverty eradication, not military occupation. So Donald Trump, Governor Bill Lee, and every elected official in Memphis and Shelby County who want to ride with them, we say no. We say no. We say no.
I think that what you heard from the elected officials has been abundantly clear. The city of Memphis and its elected leadership says, no. We say no. We say no. We say no. Now I want to get out the way because we have some community partners. It's not just elected leaders pushing back and standing in resistance. It's the community partners, the folks who are actively in the community, on the ground, residents of this great city, doing the work that you need to hear from. I'm gonna get out the way. We're gonna bring up Micah, Memphis for All, followed by the Equity Alliance.
Good morning, Memphis. The eyes of the world are. I represent, my name is King Caldwell. I represent Micah. I'm the president. Memphis Interfaith Coalition for Action and Hope. The eyes of the world are on Memphis. We, the people, speak out against an occupation. We know that our president is again over with King Charles celebrating and dining in a banquet and yet sending troops into Memphis, and we say no. And the only, the only way we will reason with you is if you turn the troops around. This is a problem that cannot be policed away.
That's right.
You've taken the resources. It requires a holistic response to systemic poverty.
Talk about it.
It requires a holistic response to institutional racism, which is what we are experiencing. It requires a holistic response to the poverty that people are experiencing day by day. Our governor refuses to deal with Memphis in an equitable way. The sanitation worker strike. Dr. King says something strange is happening in our land. Something strange is happening right here in Memphis, Tennessee. And what we have to do is straighten our backs because the man came to drive your back unless it's bent. So we straighten our back. We stand up straight and we look to the hills from where our help comes. But our help is not far. The moral arc of the universe is long, but it bends toward justice. But we have to bend. So we have to get in there and use self-determination and human agency to bring about the kingdom of God.
Good morning. Tequila Rucker, Memphis for All. Memphis will always be a city that rises whenever injustice threatens our people. Today we, today we face not only political attacks and authoritarian overreach, but it's also a form of spiritual warfare that seeks to divide us, to silence us, and to strip away the freedoms generations before us fought to secure. The proposal to deport National Guard troops into Memphis is not about safety. It is about control. It is rooted in intimidation, designed for mental enslavement. Crime is at a 25-year low, and history proves militarization does not keep communities safe. What it does is pace our people, especially our black and brown neighbors, at greater risk while wasting millions of taxpayer dollars that could be invested in mental health care, violent protection, and real community safety. We stand to name to reject the authoritarian overreach to protect our most marginalized communities from political and cultural attacks and to mobilize thousands of residents through trainings, orientations, and organizing efforts. Memphis does not need an occupation. We need investment. Courage and leadership that has courage. That will also honor the people. Our city knows how to fight for justice, and we will rise up again to defend it. To the people of Memphis, this is our moment. Do not be afraid. What we are facing is bigger than politics. It is spiritual war, and it's going to take all of us standing together to protect our cities, our families, and our future. We cannot allow fear to paralyze us or divide us, to weaken us, or to make us old. We are the strongest when we show up together, and we need you all to show up with us as we are putting forth efforts to organize the people of Memphis. And to the people across the country, stand with Memphis. What is happening here is not just about us. It's a, it's a test for our democracy and our city can be next. Authoritarianism always starts in one place, then spreads. It's when it's unchecked. Well, Memphis is here to check. So when we call on you to stay, uh, stand with us, and we ask that you stay vigilant. Vigilant? Vigilant? We ask that you stay vigilant, to speak out, to send support, and to be ready to defend your community when they come your way. So again, I ask that you join us in trainings and workshops and our efforts that we want to be mobilizing over the next few weeks. Um, and to the allies nationwide, please, uh, help us to defend our rights and to feel, uh, the safety we deserve. Memphis has been counted out before, but every time we rise higher. And this time will be no different. Because the ones who counted us out couldn't count.
My name is Rachel Springs, and I am the director of Power Building for the Equity Alliance, statewide, unapologetically black power building organization. I'm here today as a community organizer residing in Memphis, Tennessee. Not because we asked for more soldiers. I'm not here because we asked for more soldiers, or federal troops, or agents in our streets, but because our people deserve safety, dignity, and investment. Right now, the federal government is sending in the National Guards pouring millions into police, DA, ICE, and marshals, while Memphis only receives $7 million out of $94 million in public safety. But Nashville walked away with $69 million. That is not public safety. That is not equity. It's a smack in the face. In a contradiction, this is not about protecting people, y'all. Come on. This is about protecting assets. Look at the billions flowing into our, into Memphis for XAI data centers and for railroad expansions, for corporate subsidies, the land and monies connected to taking over and privatizing our public schools. The city is flooded with investment, but it's not enough. The National Guard isn't here for our kids on the way to school or our elders on fixed income. They're here to guard infrastructure, guard profit, guard property, in exchange for black and brown families being left more vulnerable than ever. History teaches us what happens when troops and federal agents flood black cities. More surveillance, harassment, criminalization. They say that they are here to fight crime. But we know that they are here to secure capital. Once again, people, it is the black and brown people in Memphis that will become collapsed. We need fully funded schools. That's what we ask. We ask for good jobs to heat family states. We ask for housing that doesn't push our people out for the sake of railroads and real estate development. We ask for clean air. We ask for clean water. You all are deploying the National Troops. So today, we draw the line in the same. Stop protecting assets at the expense of people. Stop treating Memphis like a testing ground for corporate power and state control. Invest in our families, our neighborhoods, our futures. Memphis is not a war zone. We are a community, and we will fight for it. Stand with this resolution, and we invite other brave elected officials and community leaders to stand with us. Stand against the deployment of the National Guard. Our communities deserve real public safety. Dignity and investment.
I do want to, um, just take a moment to acknowledge that the organizations you see standing behind us represent hundreds of thousands of people in the city of Memphis. It's just not this group. They represent people who want to be here today. They want their voices to be heard on this particular issue. So many of our elected officials are afraid, and they do not have background. I understand that you're concerned whether Donald Trump will have you fired. You're concerned whether free speech will be attacked. But this city, this city is a city of resilience. We are a powerful people. Standing with us today is Micah, Memphis for All. Several labor union groups. The Shelby County Democratic Party, Democratic Women of Shelby County, United Tennessee, Tennessee Immigration and Refugee Rights Coalition, the Equity Alliance, Black Lives Matter, Indivisible Memphis, Indivisible Memphis, ACLU, Vescindarios 901. I'm gonna allow a few more organizations to speak, then I'm gonna talk about the resolution. This is not just a resistance. This is a moment in time that we're going to remember where folks stand. We're going to continue organizing. We're going to continue building power in our community. Because Donald Trump is not coming here to take care of us, because in the city of Memphis, we take care of our own. Vescindarios 901, thought about Black Voters Matter, thought about the ACLU of Tennessee.
Good morning. My name is Maria Oseja. I'm a co-founder and co-, uh, lead organizer with Vescindarios 901. We, community leaders of Vescindarios 901, take a stance against the National Guard's deployment to Memphis, Tennessee. We have seen the National Guard in other cities such as Los Angeles and DC infringe upon our constitutional rights. We have also witnessed the National Guard serve the Department of Homeland Security's enforcement efforts to arrest and deport people. Vescindarios 901 stands firmly against the use of National Guard's men and women, local civilians who swore an oath to support and defend the United States Constitution, being utilized to violate the very rights that the Constitution guarantees. We stand against the government's intimidation of immigrant communities and anti-immigrant policies in our state. The recent federal and state actions by both the US President and the Tennessee Governor directly put the local immigrant community under attack and are creating fear amongst our community members. Families are afraid to go to school and take their childrens to school. They're afraid to go to work. They're afraid to move about the city, doing day-to-day labor. This is a labor issue. You are not allowing hardworking people to go to work. Vescindarios 901 stands against the authoritarian abuse of power that calling up the National Guard represents. We admonish the action, this action, as an operation of white supremacy and fascism. This is a clear intent to create a white nationalist ethno-state by overpolicing and racially profiling and incarcerating immigrants, brown, and black community members in Memphis, Tennessee. Vescindarios 901 is a grassroots community organization made up solely of local volunteers fighting for the rights of local community immigrants. We take a stance against racial profiling and government intimidation in our community. We stand against the separation of families, and we stand against the criminalization of immigrants. Vescindarios 901 is a rapid response hotline to report local immigration enforcement activity in Memphis, Tennessee, and Shelby County. We provide important information to community members so that they know their rights. Memphis is watching closely. And we will not tolerate the unjust separation of working immigrant families and black and brown families in our city.
My name is Amber Sherman. I'm the Tennessee lead organizer for Black Voters Matter. We need opportunity, not occupation. And I want to talk a little bit about what that looks like. So although so many federal funds have been removed from the city of Memphis that would actually give us opportunity, just last year, the official Black Lives Matter Memphis chapter made sure that over 300 students went to therapy for over six months and received wraparound services that lowered the youth crime in the city. Just this past year, the collective blueprint increased their youth economic development programming in partnership with the city to make sure there were wraparound services like childcare stipends, emergency transportation support, make sure they had mentors. So if they didn't get the job that they wanted, they were able to still get further skills with a mentor to get that opportunity they need. That's the kind of investment that we need. We don't need the military. We don't need the National Guard. We need investment in the city. We need a county commission that's brave that boosts our tax increase to give more opportunities to us. We need the federal government that puts our way into affordable housing. For y'all buying up all our houses for these outside investors, and then don't put anything in place to make sure they have to keep in all our housing. We need childcare options and childcare subsidies. Where the folks can go to work. If they get a good paying job, they can make sure they can show up and on time. We need actual intangible investment into the real issues for poverty eradication. We do not need military occupation.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Claire Gardner. I'm here as the community engagement director for the ACLU of Tennessee, as well as a resident of Memphis. I want to thank all of the elected and community leaders who have gathered here today to bear witness to this moment. This is a moment that will record President Trump and Governor Bill Lee on the wrong side of history if they do not change course. On Monday, Trump signed a memo that threatens to turn our beloved city into occupied territory rather than the community that we love. While Trump cuts funding for the Health Department programs and Boys and Girls Clubs that actually keep our streets safe, he's doubling down on the same heavy-handed tactics that broke trust in our communities for decades. Memphis folks know that real safety comes from empowering the community, not intimidating it. Real safety, real safety comes from investing in neighborhoods. It comes from building state-of-the-art schools with extracurricular facilities and providing mental health services when people need them most. Memphis has been having tough conversations and working on making changes in policing, like the Integrity Policing Initiative. But now, Washington wants to undo any progress that Memphians have made for Memphis. This memo, this memo could turn every traffic stop into a potential deportation and arrest at the very moment when our jails and courts are already critically overwhelmed. The ACLU of Tennessee is working through the legal implications and coordinating now with local leaders to protect residents' constitutional rights because Memphis deserves better than failed tactics dressed up as federal intervention. In Memphis, we have built something strong here, and we will not be intimidated by Washington's heavy-handed approach. We are demanding that President Trump and Governor Lee stop this planned military occupation of Memphis. But if they fail to listen to reason, then the ACLU of Tennessee will consider every legal option available. We will be prepared. We will not be scared. Because as we say in Memphis, we don't bluff. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm going to be, to be, um, brief, um, particularly as it relates to this. We know that this is what the guy who occupies the White House is supposed to do. He wants to influence the midterm elections. And I'm going the chair of the Shelby County Democratic Party to offer some brief words, and then we're gonna talk about the resolution.
You know, my name is Willis Simon. I'm the chair of the Shelby County Democratic Party. But today, I'm here to speak as a citizen, uh, because I'm gonna tell you right now. We, we are witnessing the, the, the actual dismantling of democracy. I mean, we really have to go back and look at ourselves too in this whole process. Is because what I heard, I, what I hear across the community is people saying, everybody that's saying no is just saying no. But what I hear here is people that are saying no, they're saying yes to something else. What they're saying no to is having some Band-Aid, federal Band-Aid, on something that should be hap- happening surgically across our local and state governments. What we, what we hear no to is not having some, uh, some, some instance where somebody shows up for shock and awe and then walk away and leave the same problems that they said they came to fix in the same predicament that it was in from the beginning. So what we're saying to as citizens, whether you, whether you're on the red or blue side, you gotta, everybody's gotta get behind something and say, look, at the end of the day, if Memphis failed, we all failed. We gotta start holding this thing to be, uh, this is not just a Memphis problem. This is a Tennessee problem. Because guess what? The rest of the country is looking at us and saying, what are they doing in 901? But guess what? It can happen in 615. It can happen all over the nation. And what we have to do is start standing up and saying, you know what? Instead of us concentrating on the no, look at the yeses in this crowd. Everybody in this crowd represents the yes. We're saying yes. We want investment. We're saying yes. We want to make sure that our kids can go to school safely. We've said yes to the fact that when we look at our buildings that are crumbling around, our streets crumbling around us, we're saying yes, that we want our taxpayer player dollars back on our streets. This is what we're saying yes to. The no is having a surrogate solution to come in place that is not really going to address any of the issues. We don't need, we don't need Band-Aids. We don't need federal fixes. We need local focus. And so as we leave this place and as we leave this, you know, all these great speeches, I want you guys to go home and introspectively think about what you're saying. When I see the stuff on social media saying, well, we got a bunch of loud voices saying a lot of loud things. But I think we need to get together and say, you know what? Every voice, if it speaks the same thing, if we really, really want our city to be united, if we really want to see the greatness of our city, every voice, whether big or small, needs to say the same thing, and it'll be a beautiful concert.
So the members of the Memphis City Council have put forth the resolution to urge Governor Bill Lee to reject President Donald Trump's current proposal to send the National Guard troops or the Tennessee State Guard to Memphis. Um, briefly, I'm gonna go through the resolution. Whereas President Donald Trump has signed a presidential memorandum mobilizing the National Guard to Memphis, whereas per the Tennessee statute, through the governor, has been given the powers to call the National Guard into service, the Memphis City Council may also request the support of the National Guard by adoption of a resolution if there is a breakdown of law and order or a grievous breach of peace, a riot, resistance process of the state, or disaster or imminent danger. And whereas the Memphis City Council does not mind that the circumstances currently meet the threshold outlined in the Tennessee Code to enlist our troops into service. And whereas the Memphis Police Department recently reported that overall crime in the city of Memphis has reached a 25-year low as of September 2025. Whereas studies indicate that the militarization of law enforcement such as those with weapons, attire, and tactics of war do not enhance public safety or reduce crime and put law enforcement more at risk. Whereas sending the National Guard is a tactic to address local crime, blurs the line between military and law enforcement and threatens the long-held precedent established by, uh, the state, the federal law, which bars federal troops from participating in civilian law enforcement. Whereas many members of the National Guard here in Tennessee also serve in local law enforcement or as persons' partners. Whereas interim removal of local public safety personnel and resources threaten the progress that has been made and reduces our capacity to prevent, deter, or solve crimes more directly and efficiently. Whereas the deployment of the National Guard has cost taxpayers in DC and Los Angeles more than $1 million per day, an amount that would be better used to provide Memphians' military health support, violence intervention, and other services and programs acted through them to reduce crime. Whereas it is the perspective of the Memphis City Council that support from National Guard troops is currently unwarranted, and our public safety needs will best be met by further investment into existing localized strategies. Whereas the Memphis City Council stands ready to honor our oath of office by upholding the Constitution. Now therefore be resolved, the Memphis City Council urges Governor Bill Lee to reject President Donald Trump's proposal to send the National Troops to Memphis. Now there are further be resolved that the Memphis City Council authorizes council attorney to take whatever legal action necessary to oppose the occupation of the National Guard. And I would be remiss if I did not add that on the 23rd, this elected body will meet at the city council chambers directed behind me. At 4 o'clock. If you are a person who are concerned about our If you are a person who is concerned about our democracy, concerned about the federal occupation in our communities, you're concerned about your loved ones having a suspended license, getting stopped, and the worst happening, you should come to city council meeting on the 23rd. If you're someone who genuinely loves people, you should come to the city council meeting on the 23rd. If you're someone who believes that our young people deserves opportunity, not intimidation, you should come to the city council meeting on the 23rd. As we say in Memphis, pull up. Pull up. Pull up. And at this time, Councilwoman Green and members of various organizations behind us and standing with us, locked and on, are ready to take questions.
Rachel Copeland with Channel 3, what would you say to people in the community? Because of course, we've talked to them who are in support of the National Guard and say they don't feel that crime is down and they don't feel safe. What would your message be to those community members?
I would ask them to look at facts and not feelings. I would ask them to understand that the guard that will be called up are our law enforcement personnel. That's who makes up most of the National Guard here that will further put us behind. We do not need troops and fatigues with armed guns and tanks. What we need is our police officers to be able to do their job. And so if you're actually thinking that this will solve crime, you don't understand what the root causes of crime are and you don't understand the implications of what is happening here. What it will mean for our local authorities, fire department, sheriff's department. In addition to that, there are times where we, as a nation, have to understand that things have gone too far. We are at a critical point here in our country. We are seeing free street speech restricted. We're seeing tanks being put on city streets. I'm not gonna be safer with a tank next to the Chipotle. I'm gonna be safer when we start actually investing in our children and in our students. So for everybody who says they want to feel safer, I say step up. What can you do? Can you mentor a child? Can you help pick up some of that trash that's causing blight around your neighborhood? What can you do to make your city more safe? The National Guard isn't gonna do it.
With a press conference like this, so many beautiful people out here expressing themselves, where is our mayor? This is the next question. I have a mayor that I love, has a black brother, that's a Democrat. See, we gotta get off this black and white thing. This is corruption. We have a black man that's a black brother, that's a Democrat that voted Republican for Trump. Ms. Walker, you said that our citizens of Memphis, if the tanks come on the ground, that they would be in the house. They already in the house. Our thing is, we know they coming. Let's start stressing and talking about, stop them from coming. Let's get our system together for black men that have misdemeanor driver's license that's corrupt and messed up. A lot of things in this city have been designed and what's going on today, Mr. Politician. If you don't know this that's going on in this city, this city should have been shut down. We should have had meetings like this years ago. Now it has led up to destruction. I'm gonna say this here. We can have all the money in the world to come to Memphis. Seven million dollars came to Memphis. But even if that little amount of money was spent on Memphis, Tennessee and black population, we have a problem. We gotta stop letting our white brothers take advantage of our black educated men in this city. Y'all are not standing up. We got retarded brothers here crossing each other out. It's not standing up for practice in this city. We got, where the ministers at? Y'all talk to me, man. Where's our black ministers at in this city?
Absolutely. I wanna, I wanna be abundantly clear about something. In this moment, I have to look at it in two, two different perspectives. One, I want to be very direct with the people of Memphis. We don't want this. We didn't ask for this. So this is the resistance. But also, we have to be very mindful of what the reality is. The reason, the reason you see so many organizations standing in this moment because there's been conversations happening all across the city about how we can come together. If there's any silver lining in this moment is the fact that these organizations have locked homes and decided that we're going to do everything we can with the investment we have to support people who have suspended licenses. Find ways to address the transportation issues in our city. Because we want to put people in the best position possible in this unspeakable time. This won't be the last time you see us in this moment, but just know that there will be meetings happening with organizations all across this community trying to find ways to put people in a better position.
You guys kind of questioned the legality of employing National Guard troops in the resolution. Is the city or state leaders, are you guys having a lawsuit, litigation about this actually bring that up for lawsuit?
Well, so I am a lawyer, so I'm gonna answer it like a lawyer, which is it depends. And here's what that means. I have been in consultation with constitutional scholars across this country this past week. I have been talking to, my alma mater Georgetown has a Constitutional Advocacy and Protection Organization Institute that is led by a former Assistant Attorney General, Mary McFord. And I've talked to the Public Rights Project. These are Yale, Harvard, NYU-trained lawyers specifically in constitutional law. And we are looking at absolutely every avenue. But it's gonna depend. Let me tell you, every day it changes. I know that people of Memphis are asking us, what's this gonna look like? When are they gonna come? We don't know. Every time I turn around, Bill Lee says something different. Versus, he's not considering it. Then he is considering it. Then it's gonna be for 30 days. Then it's gonna be indefinite. Then they're, they're not gonna have anything that looks like police powers. Then there are gonna be military police. I don't know. And I have to wait till they get here and they start terrorizing our community before I can talk to you about what challenges we can make, whether it be on the state level or the federal level and what laws we will file under. But just know, the fight is not just at this press conference. It is not just at City Hall. It is everything we can to fight back.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm not gonna speak about any elected official. I'm gonna speak about the people here today. The people here today saying, we don't want this. We didn't ask for this. You can go somewhere else, but not to the city of Memphis.
Let me say one more thing. I, I think that it is really important that what people understand is everybody has a different role. Me and Councilwoman Smiley and Councilwoman Corleve Walker and others who have signed on as co-sponsors of this resolution, we represent people. And the people that we represent said we didn't want this. So this is our job. We are doing our job. And I should say, somebody said we don't bluff. I think that was ACLU. Look, there's another saying we have in Memphis that I like to quote all the time. Zeebo says, where I'm from, bullies get bullied. And so that's what we're doing here. We're not backing down.
We ain't backing down.
There was a favor of our electives. We know that tourism has taken a massive hit in DC the past 30 days. Have there been any conversations with our economic counterparts like downtown Memphis Commission of Memphis Tourism?
Absolutely. We just received some statistics yesterday that I've shared with the council and the mayor's office. Exactly the economic impact that has happened in DC has been devastating to tourism, to restaurants, to all kinds of places in their normally thriving economy. So I have shared that and I'm hopeful that the Downtown Commission, the mayor will take care of it. Or our Memphis Tourism, we need people to understand there are lots of ramifications. Economics is just one of them. And for me, it's low on the totem pole. What we actually need to be concerning about is the erosion of our rights and our freedoms under the Constitution.
We're gonna take two more courses, then we're gonna wrap it up. Go ahead.
Talk about what's next for the resolution and what that process looks like in the board.
Absolutely. So on the 23rd, this viable meeting and the committee meeting, northern committee meeting, Southern committee meeting. And then move it out. Okay. So it's on the general government, I think at 9 o'clock, when I'm late sometimes. But during that time, the council will take up the resolution. Councilwoman Green, myself, Councilwoman Walker, and Councilwoman Warren will be asking for same nine minutes. Not because we believe that it has to be done right now, but we believe that the people are demanding it to be done right now. If the council listens to the people who elected them, we will have the same conversation downstairs, right behind us in the council chambers at 4 o'clock. And we'll be asking the council to pass this resolution with the added language that federal personnel not be allowed to occupy city-owned assets, particularly the buildings. Two more. One more.
Go ahead. So I'm hearing a lot about the things that y'all have to put in place as opposed to this, when we're talking about the investments and different programs and different supports that we can have in the community. How do, I guess, community organizations that want to be a part of this resolution or a part of the change in Memphis, how do they get?
Well, I'm, I'm, I know where you're going. And if, if your organization wants to be aligned, you're on the wrong side. Stand with us. Last one. We already got you, Governor. Yes, ma'am. We have heard from you.
Uh, yes. So this week, Governor Lee pretty much signaled that he is in support of the National Guard coming. I know that you all said that you are proposing this resolution for him to reconsider. In the event that he still decides to go ahead with the National Guard, what's next?
So I would say this, what we have consistently heard from some of our elected leaders is we have a line of communication with the State House, with the governor. We have a line of communication with the president. They're not listening to the people of Memphis. If you look at their press conferences, there was no one from the city of Memphis at their press conferences. There's no one in the city of Memphis deciding what happens to us. If they decide to come, is that your question?
Yes. What's next?
What are we doing if they decide to come? These group of individuals and many others are gonna continue to organize. I've had a conversation with the clerk, trying to find ways we can get people licensed reinstated, trying to find ways we can address the insurance issue, trying to find ways that we can address the low-hanging fruit. Because we know inevitably, there's gonna be one of us with a minor issue that is going to cause serious problems for them long-term. We have to be prepared as a people for what is and will come. We are ready. There you are. Ready to go! Ready to go!